Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everyone to this afternoon's study session in May City Council for Monday, April 1st, 2013. And, uh... Councilmember Glover hanging around here somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, stuff's there. The first item on the agenda is to review the agenda for tonight's regular council meeting. Page two, items two through four A. Items four B through four D. Items four E through four G. Four H through four J. Slow down, okay. Four H through four J.
They said you'd be here with humor.
You're still waiting for it to show up, right?
He didn't say good humor.
Four Kilo through, uh, four Mike. Four November through four Papa. So you know what we're talking about. Four Quebec through four Sierra.
Everybody at the Falconville Airport Authority is rejoicing.
He's rejoicing. He speaks our language. And the other ones are going, "What is a Sierra? I don't understand that." Four Tango through seven Alpha. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Just a question on six A.
Mike.
Just a question on six A. I know I still have a variety of questions on this one and I'm wondering if it would cause any big problem if we continued this to the next regular council meeting to give us some additional time to discuss issues in executive session?
Are there any problems with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Six A, then we'll continue it to the April 15th meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be it, okay? Eight Alpha through nine Bravo. And nine Charlie and nine Delta. Okay? The next item is to hear a presentation on discussion by direction on modifications to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Sheffield.
Mayor, Council. About a year ago, we came to you with some housekeeping to the zoning code update. It seems kind of odd that we're talking about something that happened a couple of years ago, but we've had a chance to kinda do a shakedown cruise, so to speak, of our zoning code update and we understand it a little bit better and we'd like to come to you and see if we can make some modifications to make it work even better. The presentation that we have-
So what you're saying is that we sort of messed up the first time, now we're trying to fix it?
You bet.
Okay, no. I get what you're saying.
We're saying we're not perfect the first time.
Well, and joking aside, that was such a significant undertaking that it would shock me if there weren't things that as we go to implement them that we wouldn't have to come back and make some technical corrections or see how they worked out. So we're not bothered, or I'm not bothered, by the fact that we're sitting here talking about things we've learned and things we might need to change.
Sure. The first thing to talk about are some land use revisions. First thing is involves small recycling facilities in the downtown business district. We have one facility that's just off of Broadway, a little bit west of Center Street. It's a little over 1,000 square feet. When we initially set this program up, we thought that we would start this at 1,000 square feet. This facility came in with a building permit of about 3,500 square feet. We'd like to increase the definition of small from 1,000 to 5,000. This is technically a violation. We'd like to amend the code so that we can go through a zoning process and complete what we think is a compatible use in that particular area. So it would, and basically, again, it's a technical definition change from 1,000 to 5,000 involving just the downtown area. Any thoughts about that?
Mayor. Councilmember Summers.
The question would be, why did we initially set it at 1,000? This is based on a specific case. Did we set it at 1,000 for a reason? Why?
It was the recommendation of the consultant when we were talking about that. The thought was that these were initially the type of small facilities that might locate into a shopping center. Might take just an initial, like a small tenant space within existing C2 zone. At the time, the C2, what we call the LC or Limited Commercial District now. The downtown area, it's a little bit different circumstance, especially in the downtown business two district, because you have a district that is kind of transitional between commercial uses and industrial uses. And so from that standpoint, we really don't have the same activity or the same opportunity for activity in these downtown areas that you would outside of that area. That's why the definition would be limited, just the downtown areas.
Okay, and how'd you come to 5,000 square foot?
Basically to accommodate this particular activity, to be honest.
Alright.
Question?
Councilmember Higgins.
We can't disapprove of that or do a variance on that because, you know, is there a concern that we might be overtaken by 5,000 square foot recycling centers in downtown?
Stay lock prevents what are referred to as use variances. And so you have to define the use the correct way and then provide opportunity for it. So it's not eligible for variance.
Do you see that as being an issue? Like, if now they can go to 5,000 square feet, are they gonna take a precious business district downtown development area?
This is primarily dealing with the DB2 district, which is that area along Broadway, so I don't think it will necessarily affect the downtown core or the downtown business district one.
Okay. Thanks.
Next is community gardens in the downtown core. Right now, this is, the Mesa Urban Garden is operating under a zoning administrator interpretation. We'd like to go ahead and make the change to the code to make it permanent. The idea basically is to authorize this with a temporary use permit for the ground level areas, but go ahead and encourage green roof and infrastructure development that way and authorize community gardens on roofs as a by right use. Any thoughts, discussions? The second has to do with RVs.
Yeah, Councilmember Higgins.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. This one actually, I'd like to talk about a little bit more, you know, outside of this meeting to kind of think through this, because one of the problems with temporary use permit, one of the problems with community gardens is you develop a community garden, you have a bunch of community buy-in. People invest a lot of sweat, blood, sweat and tears in their community garden plot. The area begins an urban revitalization partly based on the success of the community garden and then the developer of the property, particularly if it's the city, wants to then to develop that and the community garden goes away and it's replaced with a more permanent use, which is all, which are all good things. But in the case of the city owning the property, I'd like us to consider including, if we're gonna develop a community garden, can we develop them on a permanent basis and include them in our parks system? It's a permanent community garden. So I think it's the word temporary use permit. On private land, that makes sense. On public land, on city and Mesa-owned property, you know, as we develop these, we may want to say, "Hey, this is gonna be a community garden now and it's gonna be a community garden forever and at that point, you transfer that over to the park system and it becomes open space or that kind of designation instead of..." So I think there needs to be a little bit of caveat with how we characterize this, depending on the underlying ownership.
The community garden concept in the zoning code update is allowed or permitted in every district but downtown core right now. So the other zoning districts already authorize community gardens either on a, as a temporary use or as a permitted use.
I think maybe it's the way we do it on our property, on city and Mesa-owned property, I think is the rub. I think the private stuff, so you're just adding the temporary use in the downtown core.
Correct.
But I think maybe this is a good opportunity to talk about our policy about community gardens and how we're gonna characterize that, because the one that's just come in downtown, you know, it's great, a lot of, been a lot of infrastructure developed there. Is that gonna be a community garden? Is that where Mesa's community garden is? Or are we looking at that as, is it still on the list for development sites? So I'm curious as to, you know, what our policy is concerning that in the downtown core on our property going forward.
I'm sorry, are you asking me to then pull it from the housekeeping list and bring it back as a separate item from the zoning standpoint?
Yeah, I guess my question is, how does that relate to zoning? Wouldn't that be as, we as owners, we can decide at any time to pull that out and to request a rezone or whatever to make it a permanent green space.
Yeah, that's a good question.
We could do that anytime regardless of what the zoning is. I mean, we own the property.
Right.
We can dedicate that as park space. We can do at any time, can't we?
Mayor, Council, these items that Ms. Sheffield's talking about, the senior items that are gonna go through a public hearing process, planning's on board, come back to you. And so I think we can maybe be doing that process while we consider what Councilmember Higgins has talked about, maybe this is kind of a separate item in terms of property ownership and how we wanna handle it for city-owned property.
And can I, Council, can I get some clarification? Because I'm not aware of a permanent obligation for parks unless it was purchased by bond funds and then all we do if we wanted to swap that out-
Yeah, we decide that.
We just change that out for, I mean, we had to do that in a federal encumference where we actually had to go find like property or similar valued property, but I don't know of any obligation the city has other than we would probably have to replace it, but not necessarily-
But once again-
No, that's not what I'm talking, getting at at all. No. When we designate a community garden on our property, we need to consider, is this gonna be park space from here on out? Is this gonna be a community garden? Or are we just doing this temporarily to help facilitate future development to happen on that? So it's a separate issue than the zoning. We'll have to talk about it another time.
I guess I'd like to get clarification on, I need to understand from the city attorney's office, even design somebody a city park, what does that mean also? I mean, be different than-
It means everything until you decide to change the use.
That's what I, that's what I-
Then it means something else.
I wanna make sure it's not being read into somehow designating that. Do you have some imperceptibility right or protection?
Well, from a legal standpoint, no. As we found out with Riverview and things like that, from a political and a public policy standpoint, I think it does. And that really is what guides land use, is what we think is best for the city and what the citizens believe is best for their neighborhood and for the city. And it's the discussion that takes place then and, you know, in places like Riverview, you come to an accommodation where you try to accomplish both. You know, you maintain public space, you agree to replace athletic facilities, and then you change the use from a golf course to a spring training facility in Wrigleyville and voila, you have a change in use that is a combination of both retaining parks and also changing something from one open space use to another type of open space use.
Yeah, well, we could talk about the policy around that another time.
Alrighty. Okay.
Next are RV storage lots in the LC district. What we've found is that we've got several homeowners associations that no longer want to maintain their RV storage lots and right now, they're considered accessory uses in residential districts. We're having proposals come forward where they're taking the existing land use and they're wanting to making that available to the general public. So it's no longer accessory use to these homeowners associations, they're making them more commercial activities. What we'd like to do is, from a zoning standpoint and from a general standpoint, these activities, generally, they're usually existing conditions. Go ahead and rezone those properties to the limited commercial district LC. Do that with a special use permit, but also develop some standards so that we're not using prime commercial land for RV storage or essentially a dead use. So that's basically the proposal.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
Councilmember Higgins?
Does this give them all the rights that come with a limited commercial property or is it because it's under a special use permit that limited commercial rezone is gonna be forever limited to, you know, is there anything keeping them from coming down later and saying, "Oh, it's, my zoning is limited commercial, I wanna redevelop this as commercial space and I have zoning by right to develop"?
It may have, they may have, they may get certain entitlements that come with the limited commercial district, yes. But the special use permit could place restrictions on that, depending, as long as they keep that activity up. There's also the possibility of a development agreement that might limit opportunities for other limited commercial uses if there's a concern that way, yes.
Can you better describe what instances they're an accessory use? Can you give a, for example?
For example would be-
Community that has them as accessory use now?
Sunline Village, which is located between Greenfield and Higley, between Southern and Broadway, has an RV storage lot that's accessory, has been run by the homeowners association for years. They recently sold-
Who owns the underlying property? The homeowners association?
They did until recently. Then they sold that property to somebody else who wants to operate the RV storage. But in order to make his business work, he has to make his, he has to expand his market, which includes making his lot available to people who live outside of Sunline Village.
And maybe down the road, he could come upon a situation that to make, continue to make that business work, he may need to develop part of that property-
Yes.
-within that development as limited commercial?
Sure, and that would modify a special use permit, which would mean it would go back to Board of Adjustment and probably have some site plan review issues as well. And so there would be public review of any modification of the site plan later on.
Sounds like a can of worms.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, this whole special use permit, conditional use, you know, you run into issues because the underlying zoning creates certain rights and privileges and sometimes, as with this, those aren't really intended. But it's like, the only way to accomplish this short-term or maybe long-term or difference or special niche use is to grant overall privileges. And I don't mind it going back to Board of Adjustments, but I feel a little uncomfortable and maybe it's not a huge problem in creating a certain right and then saying, they could come back and, "What is a site plan modification?". And they'd come back and say, "You know, I don't wanna use it as an RV park anymore. I wanna use it as this and it's consistent with underlying zoning and this council would have never approved that underlying, that specific use if that's what had been presented." Does that make sense?
Yes.
And so Mayor, if I may, the real issue seems to be these older RV lots that have been part of the homeowners association that are starting maybe transition a little bit, not providing that much function directly for the neighborhood. So maybe there's another way we can tackle the same issue besides this way of doing it with the change to LC zoning, maybe some other ways within the residential zoning we can allow the special use permit.
Yeah, I would like whatever designation allows that to continue to exist as an RV park brings into it certain reviews because opening to the public is different than opening it to the neighbors and doesn't allow any rights in addition to what it's currently being used for.
I wanna make sure that we're clear, we're talking about the RV storage as an RV park?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I used, I misstated, the RV storage. But see, to me, for example, and then this is where I think you have some issues. You have RV storage, which is primarily accessible through internal streets, and now they wanna sell it to open up general public. You know, how does that impact it if now you're bringing the general public in through these internal streets, whereas we would have never looked at having a commercial building that only has access to internal streets?
And so it would have to be part of the process and the standards we had set up to allow it to happen would have to address issues like that. If you couldn't do it by coming directly off the arterial or some way not through the neighborhood, then it wouldn't be able-
Or, yeah, I wanna make sure that we don't set a situation, set up a situation where they can, we can get over those basic things, say, "Okay, well, they're just bringing in RVs for storage, but because they have an LC underlying zoning, that all of a sudden they can not, they can change the use from a, from a, an RV storage to something that complies with LC and that use may not be anything we would have ever considered and all they have to do is go back to the Board of Adjustment with a site plan change and their argument is, 'I have zoning.'"
Sure.
Yeah, you know, this is a technical issue, it's not a land use issue. I don't feel comfortable with allowing that kind of thing because I think we're gonna have a problem with that.
Okay.
What are some of the uses that could be allowed in a limited commercial?
General retail, restaurant, office uses.
Yeah.
I mean, does it get us closer to mixed use?
It's, they're generally in-
Well, that's where we wanna, if that's where we wanna get. Well, I guess what I'm saying is that I don't feel comfortable with putting that out without knowing it's gonna be there and only allowing a Board of Adjustment whose level of review is defined by law and is primarily technical an issue, not policy an issue. Is that accurate way of saying that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
And that's what I, that's what I feel uncomfortable with. So however you can bridge that gap.
Okay.
I don't mind them using it as an RV storage, I don't mind them opening up as general public. If they decide they wanna quit doing that, they should have to start the process to change that use to something that involves P and Z and council, I would believe.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I got the direction.
Alright.
Okay. Next is tattoo parlors. The proposal is to-
Have we had a problem with these? I haven't noticed that. Didn't get that memo.
This, the proposal follows an example that was recently adopted by the city of Phoenix. The basic proposal would, in commercial districts, which are the limited commercial, general commercial, downtown business one, downtown business two and downtown core, they would require a special use permit. In the industrial districts, they would become by right. We would maintain the separation requirements from schools and from other tattoo parlors, which is roughly just under a quarter mile. And we'd also develop a review criteria for the Board of Adjustment for their special use permit process. So these would no longer go to council.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Just a question for the city attorney's office. To me, this seems to be moving along in a direction that's consistent with the opinion of the court that we're dealing with. Am I correct? This approach wouldn't run afoul of any directives from the court.
Mayor, Councilman Kavanaugh, that's correct. This is not going to be contra to what the Supreme Court ruled, but we are following the Phoenix model.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Let me ask you this. I mean, I think one thing I've looked at is, and I have no idea without knowing the specific things, what it would, how it would fit in with the court hearing, but I think one of the issues with tattoo parlors is similar to what we had with massage parlors. Whereas we talked about rules for conducting and guidelines for conducting business that were objective in nature. I would still, even with tattoo or any kind of these things, see how far we can go and I get it that the court reeling, because this is free speech thing, I think we've still been able to, with speech and other things, been able to create reasonable guidelines that are objective in nature, that are content neutral. And the thing that I worry about on this is we still have special use and just distances don't mean that we don't have two really bad business operators 1,201 feet apart. And I think there's a good way to conduct, even a tattoo parlor, there's a bad way to conduct that. And I wonder if there's any way we can look at some of those objective standards that we put in with the massage parlors as part of this, as part of the special use permit? They can still be handled at a staff level. They can still be, they can still be open and not restrictive on speech, but they go to the conduct of business as opposed to what they do, which I think we can do with many other areas and would be consistent with what the court hearing is. Is that possible?
Mayor, you're correct and that's the intent, to have some objective criteria in which staff, because you're delegating a power and so we need some objective criteria for staff to follow.
Can you go back? I mean, I think there are things that, unfortunately with the case that we were dealing with, that were concerns of this council and one of the problems, and I believe that one of the reasons we had issues is they were not spelled out and therefore we really couldn't put them out and apply them. I think had we done that, we may not have ever been in the situation we were in because staff could have had more tools to take care of it, other than just zoning rules. You know, if you're zoning and you have a business, there's not a whole lot staff can do because you're in compliance. If there's, if there are ways that we can set some standards as, and I don't even know what those are without looking back at the massage. If you can maybe look at that and come up with a few things, I'd be interested in seeing if, in adding some objective standards to a special use permit that staff could take care of that would at least ensure that these businesses meet a minimum standard of the way they conduct business. Is that okay?
Absolutely, Mayor. And just so the record's clear, the court did not invalidate our ordinance.
Right.
This is just some technical correction that we're trying to do, to be consistent with Phoenix.
I understand and I think this is maybe an opportunity to maybe shore up what we're trying to do and accomplish the goals that I think the council was trying to accomplish, which was to ensure that we have high-quality businesses, or at least businesses that meet a certain standard that I think we can define.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay. And this is just real quick, I just wanted to show you, this is just an overall city zoning map. The areas that are in blue are the industrial areas, the areas that are in pink and in bright red are the, I'm sorry, the areas in bright red are commercial districts. And so roughly speaking, about 8% of the city's land area is involved in commercial and industrial districts. About 5% of that is commercial, about 3% of that is industrial. By delegating this to become by right in industrial districts, we'd be creating a by right circumstance for about 3% of the city's land area, give or take. So I just, we just wanted to give you kind of a, and then this is the downtown zoning map. Most of the downtown area is commercial, roughly, give or take, about two-thirds is some sort of commercial or mixed use or industrial type of activity. So we'll take a look at that criteria, we'll take a look at those objective standards as well as some of the distance criteria.
Okay.
Some of the design standards that we were proposing. Real quick, this is, they seem a little silly and it's kind of technical, but right now, the ordinance allows people to count half of their alley when they consider a rear yard setback, but it doesn't allow them to use canal banks. So what we're proposing to do is to incorporate canal banks into the same definition as alleys, give them the same benefit for that particular purpose. It would serve, basically what it would do, according to the diagram here, this is the extra 10 feet that, well, it could be eight feet to 10 feet, depend upon if it's a 16-foot alley or a 20-foot alley. But that extra green area in the back is what they would get in terms of extra buildable area for those lots that back up to those areas. Pretty much the same thing would occur for alleys. You still get the same light and air and separation you would get normally, but it would give people a little bit more, a little bit larger area which to expand and build additions on their property. Any issues with that? I'm sorry, Mr. Richen? Okay.
They turned off my mic. So it's not technically-
No comment.
Are we done? It's not the center line of the alley, it's the first 10 feet of the alley?
In alleys that are 16 feet or 20 feet wide, it's to the center line of the alley. So it's eight feet or 10 feet. For canal banks, we're only proposing to use up to 10 feet of that. So we're not, if, so if you have a, like, for example, I think the, yeah, the upper right picture for canal banks where you have both, obviously, an open canal and as well as something that's probably like 40 or 50 feet wide, they'd only get 10 feet of that. They wouldn't get 20 feet or 30 feet of that.
Why?
Why not, why not let them build on the property line there in that instance?
Basically because we feel it would overwhelm the lot. You know, 6,000 square foot lot, typically that's what you have, that back 6,000 and 9,000 square foot lots that back up to this. You're already limited at 50% lot coverage. So by bringing it all the way to the back, in essence, it creates a condition that's a little bit unusual for that lot. There's no back area, there's no open area to open space to go-
Wouldn't you leave the open space between the house and the, and the additional unit? The accessory dwelling unit?
This would allow, no, this is-
Or are you talking about the-
This is, this is the setback to the back of the residence.
Oh, to the back, okay, so you're not talking about accessory dwelling units or garages?
No, no, those are already allowed to go all the way to the property line.
Okay.
This would, this would allow the back of the residence to encroach a little bit further into the back.
Okay.
Okay. Balconies and patios into street side setbacks. Right now, the setback along arterial streets is 30 feet, this would allow a 10-foot encroachment for that. Basically it allows some more interesting massing of the building. Basically tries to loosen up some of the site plan again for multifamily properties. Any thoughts?
And basically move them closer to the street?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the balconies themselves, not the building.
Right. The balconies, the outcroppings, the overhangs, those kind of things.
Exactly.
Okay.
Reduced street side setbacks in industrial districts. The street side setbacks in commercial districts were already reduced from 30 feet to 15 feet with the zoning code update. Quite honestly, we didn't really, we thought we'd extended it to this district or the industrial districts, we hadn't. We think that that policy works for this as well. It provides, again, it loosens up the area a little bit. We provide still the landscaping along the street that we're generally calling for, but it gives the property owner a little bit more land with which to work.
What are you trying to show in these pictures here? What's your illustration?
The basic point, this is the, this is the area that's along Stapley. These areas were developed when the standard was at 10 feet, but they're actually, were developed at 15 feet, so it shows what a 15-foot setback could look like.
The bottom, this bottom picture?
Both of them, actually.
So the separate one, is it just the fence that's subject to the setback or?
Well, it's the fence, the parking lot, the building are all subject to-
Well, let's be careful on that because we don't know if there's an easement running down there that- down there that, because on some of our older arterials, where we were running utilities down the sides.
Sure.
We have, we have utility easements, and the setback didn't start until actually the end of that, that easement on some of those older buildings.
Yeah, normally, that's accomplished by the future width line, which is at 65.
I understand that. I say on some of the older arterials. On the new ones, we don't, because we put the utilities usually in the street.
Sure.
Or under the street. It's just some of the other ones.
Okay.
Doesn't happen that much on new ones, but on some of the older roads.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll ask for some help and make sure that we're not creating a condition that's unusable. Right now, the ordinance will give a, an ability for a property owner to reduce their minimum parking requirements if they're within one-eighth of a mile of a transit stop. This would be for bus rapid transit or for light rail. We'd like to increase that distance to quarter-mile. This is consistent with what we did with the form-based code. Basically, it's the, the common definition of a pedestrian-walking shit.
I'd like to ask a question, it goes back to landscaping, it has nothing to do with what you're saying, but it is related. On our subdivision, on our landscaping standards, in that 15-foot setback or whatever, we've got to figure out, we've got to quit requiring trees, they're going to grow into power lines.
Yes.
We require people to grow 20-foot trees that are underneath 15-foot power lines, and then we have now huge roadways, arterials, where we have the ugliest trees in the world, because SRP's gone in there, and we have gone in there and cut the living daylights out of trees to keep them out of the power lines, and why we, as a city, ever required people to put trees that we knew were going to grow into power lines is beyond me. But that's what the, that's what the landscape standards say. And there, there needs to be something in our, either our zoning or landscape standards that says, if you're underneath an existing high-voltage power line, you're okay if you build a five-foot bush or shrub, and not a 20-foot tree. So just to, if we could put that, I don't know where it fits in, but we continue to have that problem.
Okay.
Even with recent builds.
The next one has to do with an unintended consequence of the zoning code update. We updated our single-residence standards regarding two-car parking requirements, but unfortunately, they became retroactive to, because of the way it's written, they're technically retroactive to pre-2011 residences. What we'd like to do is to give the authority to the zoning administrator to reduce the requirement on an as-needed basis, basically to use common sense and some judgment on these properties, so to determine when it's.
Are you actually going to put that into the thing, use common sense and just?
Yeah, and we'll put it into the job requirement for the zoning administrator, which probably takes it out of it.
Please do. I mean, I, we all know the situation, like, you look at that house, and you have a single-car garage, and I've, I've seen it happen, where they sell that house, someone's been using that house for 30 years and doing just fine with a single-car garage in there, and all of a sudden, someone moves in and they want to change a wall, and we tell them, "Oh, you're going to have to also add a second-car garage." That's where the common sense and the.
Right.
That, and we see those situations, especially with parking, and the rationale is always, well, now's today's standards. This building, and this happens with commercial properties and anything, this building has done just fine for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, and now all of a sudden, we're going to create huge burdens on property owners who do not, who aren't trying to change the use of the property, they just happen to be a new owner, and now there's a gotcha. So whatever we can do to bridge that gap, as part of that common sense and reasonable judgment, I would love.
And then, again, shared parking and alternative compliance plans, again, rather than, right now, it's a special use permit to the Board of Adjustment, we'd like to delegate these to the zoning administrator to do it without public hearing, and then there, there'll be an appeal to the Board of Adjustment if there's a disagreement. Ocative plants, and this may address some of your issues, but we'd like to develop a substitute table for ocative plants to substitute a certain number of ocative plants to replace trees. There are substitute tables for palm trees and saguaro cactus that are in the code now. We don't have one for ocative. We'd like to develop one for ocative and provide that option to landscape architects. We'd also like to reduce the street-side tree ratio. Right now, it's roughly four trees per 100, we'd like to reduce it to two and a half trees per 100, so we can start creating a little bit more visibility into some of these commercial centers. The example you see here has 11 trees, that was actually 12 trees, that was required by code. We'd like to reduce that to six in this particular circumstance, as an example.
Council Richons?
Can we just blow up the ratio? Why don't we, I mean, we need to head towards appropriate landscaping, you know, because there's some places that trees aren't appropriate, and we're jamming trees in a frontage that a tree doesn't belong in for the sake of meeting a ratio.
Mm-hmm.
Can we, can we give more, a little bit more context space? Because, I mean, you know, even, even when we're in a transit area, we want to put a lot of shade, and we get, we're forcing the wrong tree in these little tree wells, and they don't survive well there either, you know, so I think we need to really, I don't know what the solution is, but I'd like to get away from ratios and get to where we are focusing on planting the right tree in the right spot, and give it a place that it can actually survive more than 10 years.
Okay.
I mean, how do we get to that?
We're going to get creative.
Well, and I would, I would agree with Councilmember Richons in the sense that we tend to be on ratios, and, and the reality is, that landscaping is the part that gets short-changed in a development. It's viewed by many developers as, and I don't agree with this, but it's just the way. When you're cutting that check, and your project's already at or over budget, putting in landscaping gets short-changed, and that means we get short-changed. And I don't want to lower standards, but how we apply those standards, I think we can, we can do a better job. And I don't know how to do that and still stay objective, and it would be great if we could apply some common sense standards to things like that without lowering, lowering the overall quality standards, but I would agree, we force things sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, if we're trying to provide shade, how you accomplish that shade shouldn't matter as much as, you know, whether it's a man-made structure, or a tree, or something like that. So I mean, we got, we got to decide what we're trying to accomplish in front of that, in that particular frontage.
Okay.
Phoenix, to their credit, and I know it's getting late hour, but Phoenix, to their credit, has done a good job with a tree and shade plan, and so I think, you know, if we could change the crib, some of the solutions, and we just had, talked to Donna DiFrancesco, we just had all of them over here in Mesa to talk about these issues. I think you attended some of those workshops, so I know that we're kind of on that direction anyway.
So, I understand that the council's got the regular meeting in a couple of minutes. Do you want me to come back with the rest of these later, or do you want to?
How many more slides you got?
Probably about 10.
This is more.
Oh, I've got four? Okay. Well, I've got, I've got 10 issues, let me put it there.
Go for it.
Okay.
Next bill dated June.
Looks good to me. Next one.
All right. Okay, some processing revisions, homeowners' associations to vote for single-residence setbacks. The way the transition works for the PAD's, things like Dobson Ranch, or Red Mountain Ranch, the council adopted ordinances that allow things like livable areas to encroach 10 feet into the front, or 10 feet into the rear setbacks. However, those ones are not applicable to PAD's, because those are planned sites, their site plans are planned, and their individual lots are planned. The thought would be that, instead of having to come back for a major modification of the PAD, all the way back through P&amp;Z and to City Council, we would allow the homeowners' associations to vote on this through their CCNR process, I'm sorry, conditions, covenants, and restrictions process. And, and then, if that was authorized, then that would become the approval of that, instead of coming back through twice on this. We'd let the homeowners decide if they want those options to apply to the HOA. Right now, we have, regarding site plan review cases, you can have a site plan review that might, for example, if you were required to get a special use permit, and the code might say you need a site plan review, that would be, you'd end up going to P&amp;Z and Board of Adjustment. The thought would be that that's a redundant review, that the site plan review can take place on the part of the Board of Adjustment. So we would eliminate the need for that second case. In addition to that, we would propose to set a time limit on site plans at three years, with the idea being that if, for some reason, the site plan wasn't vested within the three-year time period, you would have to go back through site plan review. This would allow the opportunity that any new changes that might come about in terms of standards that might apply to that site plan, would get the chance to be reapplied to that particular site.
And currently, it's?
Right now, it.
It's open?
It's open.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
And then, similar to the garage issue, we have a building articulation requirements that apply to pre-19, or pre-2011 homes. We'd like the zoning administrator, again, to use that same common sense thing that we were talking about with the parking issue, to apply to the building articulation requirements. Same type of thing, a person comes in for a building addition, code says that they're required to do certain things to the front of their house, well, that house has been sitting there for 40 years, the addition has nothing to do with this, but yet the code's technically requiring this.
Gotcha.
And then measuring separation requirements, this has to do more with making sure that the distances are, we're measuring the distance consistently, for example, in medical marijuana. If you're trying, if you're trying to keep a medical marijuana dispensary from a church or a school, we measure from the campus of the school to the wall of the medical marijuana facility. We want to make sure that that's codified and that becomes the standard approach to how we measure these separation requirements.
Building wall or outside wall?
The outside wall.
What if there's no outside wall?
Well, yeah, the outside wall of the building, an enclosed space.
So not the privacy wall, but the, but the building wall?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, your, your little map, your thing, the red dots, is that the campus that you're measuring from?
That would be the campus, right. So if, for example, if that, if that particular site was a school, I don't, I don't think it is, it just was convenient for the purposes of the illustration. Instead of measuring from the building that's on that lot, we measure from the outside edge of that property.
Campus edge is the property line, basically.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and some technical revisions. We've got two sections of the code that cover the same thing, we'd like to consolidate them into one regarding attached accessory buildings. Substantial Conformance Improvement Permits has some fuzzy language in it regarding what it can may address. We'd like to make sure it covers some specific things, including foundation-based building separation and drive-through lane standards. The form-based code transit, we've adopted it, we'd like to formally incorporate it into the zoning code, and to do that, we need to add some base districts to Chapter Three, and there's a typo in regarding the residential small-lot districts, it says 2.0, it said 2.5.
Councilmember Kavanaugh? He has a problem with the typo, I think.
Okay.
No, I just, kind of food for thought, while we're doing this, could we explore the issue of separation requirements for title loan businesses, as we have done with payday loans? Just, because I don't believe that title loans were included when we last addressed the, the other issue, and that's now become a bigger issue for the community to deal with, and so I think it would be helpful, at least to raise the issue in the public hearings and discussions.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it.
Didn't realize we, that didn't, that, that didn't, the definition of payday didn't encompass title loans.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we define it, I mean, I guess, I thought we had defined it in a non, or I guess we didn't do that, the previous council, in a non.
Yeah, the, the issue with payday loans is how they were defined by the state, they were called a non-charter financial institution.
Yeah.
And they were.
Are title loans chartered?
And title loans are not defined the same way by the state.
Okay, so we need to come up with a definition that basically says the same thing, that it can change with the times, however best we can.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Richon?
There's a lot of authority going to the zoning administrator. Who's the zoning administrator in the City of Mesa?
Right now, that would be Gordon Sheffield.
And Gordon Sheffield is you?
It's me.
Now, does Gordon Sheffield have common sense and, and reason?
Probably not. So fortunately, we can hire someone who does.
Oh, okay, all right.
I am a big Gordon Sheffield fan.